Back to order, can we all please stand for the pleasure of allegiance?
Pleading allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start today's meeting with a couple presentations. First, we want to add one on now that we'll start with will be from our Parks and Rec Director Terry Fields and to talk about our summer concert series, I guess, and Mrs. Zancheck, you'd like to come up forward too, appreciate that.
Good evening, Council. It's my pleasure, excuse me, it's my pleasure on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department to announce the Rhythm and Rhymes Musical Concert that will be happening July 20th on the front lawn. Starts at noon and will go till the evening hours around 10 o'clock. We'll have food trucks, vendors there, and a marketplace. This is in collaboration with Oakland County Parks and the City of Oak Park. The three of us have come together for the second year in a row. Last year, unfortunately, we had a little damp weather, but we brought it inside and had about 3,500 people. This year, we're looking forward to some really great weather and a good time by all, and of course, there is no charge for the concert. And if I could real quickly introduce Alexander Zancheck, who would like to say a couple words. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for your support. You know, it's so much fun to do these events and why not give you a scoop? One of our headliners this year is going to be Mesa Leek, the great R&B singer. Mesa will be there. Rance Allen Group will be there as well, so we have a little bit of gospel because it is rhythm and rhymes. And if you've been watching The Voice, you know that Beth Manley Griffith was an amazing part of The Voice this year. She's going to be part of our festival as well. So, we have a great lineup, you have a great city, and thanks for your support. We'll see you all on July the 20th, and you can't beat the price, it's free. Thanks, everybody. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. And thanks for that scoop, I appreciate that. I'll just make sure I get up front. Alright, very good. Our next presentation is a joint resolution recognizing the 100th anniversary of women's suffrage, passage of the 19th Amendment. And, yes, our President Pro Tem Taylor will present that resolution. If there was anybody that was here to receive that on today, you may also come forward today as well.
Good evening. Seeing no one, I just would like to announce that we are, we being the City of Southfield along with the mayor and our council president, will be doing a presentation of a joint resolution for the 100th anniversary of women's suffrage, the passage of the 19th Amendment of the United States Constitution, recognizing that women, the 19th Amendment for the U.S. Constitution guaranteeing women the right to vote. And the resolution reads, without reading the whole thing, I'm just going to go to the bottom, the most important paragraph where it says, "Be it further resolved that the City of Southfield will fly the 19th Amendment victory flag from June 10th, 2019 through June 14th, 2019, to commemorate the State of Michigan ratifying the 19th Amendment, and from August 24th, 2020 through August 28th, 2020, to commemorate the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States." And it's signed by the mayor and all the council. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next, we have another joint resolution that I'd like to present to the boys' basketball team from Southfield Christian School for their Division State Championship win. So, I'd like to ask Coach Brundage and Coach Swift and all of the young men from the team to please come up and join me if you will. Let's give them a hand. They're all making me feel a little short up here right now. So, we have a joint resolution again by the mayor and the council. It reads, "Whereas Southfield Christian School, a ministry of Highland Park Baptist Church in Southfield, is a college preparatory PK through 12 educational community committed to pursuing excellence for the glory of God. And Southfield Christian first opened in 1970 and has since grown more than 500 students currently enrolled in the PK through 12, representing approximately 40 cities and 100 different churches from the tri-county area and metropolitan Detroit. Whereas the Southfield Christian Boys Basketball Team won its second consecutive and fifth in eight years Division IV State Championship at the Breslin Center in East Lansing on March 16th, 2019, with the defeat of Frankfurt High School at the score of 62 to 39." Very good. And whereas this year's team finished 21 and 6, winning 19 of their last 20 games to help capture the school's fifth boys' basketball state title in the last eight years, this year's team statistically was the best defensive team in school history with an aggressive defense that stymied opponents during the state tournament. And whereas the team extended the program's conference winning streak to 83 straight games, the team also won their eighth straight MIAC conference title, eighth straight MHSAA district title, and have now won 20 or more games for eight seasons straight. During the Eagles' amazing year, the program is 181 and 30 overall, 97 and 1 in conference play. They have won six MHSAA regional titles and played 11 games at the Michigan State University for the semifinals and finals game. So, now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Southfield, Oakland County, State of Michigan, do hereby recognize and congratulate Southfield Christian Boys Basketball Team on winning their fifth Division IV State Championship on March 16th, 2019. Be it further resolved that we, the mayor and city council, convey our collective commendation to the city, to the Southfield Christian Boys Team's players, coaches, administrators, and achieving yet another championship of which not only the students and staff of Southfield Christian Schools can be proud of, but also the entire city of Southfield. And it is dated to today's date, the 20th of May, 2019, and signed by the council and the mayor. And we have a proclamation for each one of you all here today. Let's give them a hand, please, one more time. Lloyd? If we can have the coaches come up, if maybe you want to say a few words?
Hey Lloyd?
Yeah, Mr. Fercassi.
You had mentioned their scholastic rating, 3.6 grade point, 3.6 grade point.
3.6 grade point?
They won a coaches scholarship award also.
Okay.
3.6.
So, we have some real true student athletes and academics right here with us as well. Coach, would you like to say something?
You caught me off guard, but these young men, they work really hard. I mean, our success isn't because they just showed up one day, from the coaches, from their teachers, from the administrative, Mr. Fercassi, who's our loyal, diehard guy, he's like the weatherman, he's always at our games encouraging our players. And we just feel proud that we represent our city, the City of Southfield, and these kids are doing, these young men are doing positive things, not only on the basketball court, but we hold them to a high standard academically as well. And a lot of our players go on to play at the collegiate ranks. We have one gentleman last year, he's at a scholarship at Penn University, University of Penn, so.
Very good. Thank you. If you just want to walk around here, the council would all like to greet you all as well, too.
I bet y'all can all dunk, right?
Nah, I ain't got no bounce.
You ain't got no bounce yet, you're good.
Congratulations. 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 You know, it's really too bad that when you turn on the news, most of the time you don't see students like this on the news. You just see the other element of students, and people walk away, or people think that, yeah, that's what our teenagers are all about, but they don't see this kind of effort that goes into being the top flight, the top of the good guys. So, I'm glad that we could spend a little bit of time recognizing that they have worked hard to do the right thing.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, Mr. Fercassi.
I'd like to also mention that Coach Josh Baker is not able to be here. He coached these young men all through the good times, had very few losses, by the way. He came from Romulus, and he's not here because he's been picked up by the University of Alabama. And I want to wish him the very best in his new job.
Very good. So, before we move forward, can we get a?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the presentation of joint resolution for the 100th anniversary of women's suffrage and the presentation of joint resolution for the Southfield Christian Schools Boys Basketball Team.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the joint resolutions, one for the 100th anniversary of women's suffrage and the second for Southfield Christian Schools. Is there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Alright, those resolutions have been approved. And again, congratulations to the young men, and congratulations to our women, right? 100 years is very significant. I mean, women's rights are a very hot topic today. So, I want to acknowledge that, and I'm glad the City of Southfield is acknowledging the importance of that as well.
Yes, thank you. Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular minutes of the meeting, of our meeting, May 13th, 2019.
Support? It's been moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the regular meeting minutes of May 13th.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
There are two small corrections in the minutes, as it relates to two of the motions. The clerk does have those corrections as well, but for the council, the first is on page six for the appointments. Number 2019 dot 113 should read that Councilman Brightwell made the motion that was seconded by Councilman Mandelbaum. And then on page 15, resolution number 2019 dot 127 for the ordinance 1702 should read that Councilman Mandelbaum made the motion and Councilman Fercassi seconded.
Okay. Are there any other concerns? It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the regular meeting minutes with the changes submitted by Councilman Mandelbaum. Are there any other concerns or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Alright, meetings minutes are approved with those changes. Thank you, Mr. Mandelbaum. I'll accept a motion on the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through K.
Support? It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve consent agenda items A through K. Are there any questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Alright, consent agenda items are approved. We'll now move to our public hearings portion, and Mr. Crowe will lead that discussion for us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our first and only public hearing is PZR 19 dash 0003. Petitioner is RangeCom Development on behalf of the owner, Chan Professional Properties. The property is 3.59 acres. It's located on the east side of Evergreen Road, just south of Northwestern Highway. The proposed rezoning is from conditional zoning OS to be rezoned to OS office service. The property was conditionally rezoned from RT, attached single-family to OS office service back in 2008, and the development never occurred per the conditional zoning agreement, so thus the property must be rezoned as a condition of that original approval. This is the, the property is made up of two parcels. They're about 400 feet deep and 400 feet wide. The existing conditions, it's undeveloped land. The properties to the north is an office building, the properties to the west are multiple family, the properties to the south are multiple family. And the future land use does support the office service rezoning request, current zoning, proposed zoning. If the rezoning is approved, then we'll, the next piece will be talking about the site specifics and the proposed site development. So, since this is a public hearing, I'll be happy to answer the questions after the public hearing's been completed.
So, I'd like to open the public hearing for PRZ 19 dash 003. Anyone that would like to speak to this, please come to the podium. You can give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037 dash 0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I just had a couple of questions. If it was already zoned OS, what is the purpose of zoning it CZROs, if I'm correct? And the second question is, we have a lot of empty structures that are here in the City of Southfield that maybe 25, 30 years ago were very viable office spaces. Why are we not encouraging the developers to take over these older model structures and rehabilitate them, or even tear them down and rebuild, but in that same particular area? And then I want a few more specifics in terms of what type of business this is going to be, and any future changes in what type of business can go for this rezoning. Thank you.
Our public hearing is still open. If there are, again, any other residents that would like to speak to this particular matter, please come to the lectern, and you have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, questions, concerns? Yes, Mr. Mandelbaum?
If Mr. Crowe can just answer the question?
Absolutely.
The current zoning is conditional zoning, so CZROs is the current zoning. One of the conditions that if it doesn't ever get developed, it has to be rezoned. And so what you're considering tonight is going from the conditional zoning to straight OS office service, which supports the proposed use for the site. And a host of general office and medical office uses are permitted in the OS district. And we'll get into the specifics of what's being proposed under the site plan, but I'm asking, counsel, just consider the zoning on its own merits, and it is supported by the future land use plan that you approved as part of the master plan in 2016.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else from counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Did you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay. Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to move approval of PZR 19 dash 0003.
Support?
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Fercassi, that we approve PZR 19 dash 003. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we introduce ordinance number 1703.
Support? It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we introduce ordinance number 1703. Are there any concerns, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, the ordinance has been introduced. Thank you very much on that one. We'll move on to our site plan now.
I'll do the introduction through the chair, and then we have representatives of the proprietor here to talk about specifics. Again, the petitioner is RangeCom Development on behalf of the owner, Chan Professional Properties, for PSP 19 dash 0003. The property is 3.59 acres. It's on the east side of Evergreen Road, just south of Northwestern Highway, and the proposal is to construct a 24,000 gross square foot skilled nursing facility with 24 beds under Phase 1. The property is expandable to 36 beds in Phase 2 with associated parking. Again, the property is 400 feet deep, 390 feet wide, existing conditions. And I'm going to turn it over to the builder, the building representative to walk you through the site plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have after the presentation.
My name is Cliff Healy with RangeCom Development, 1630 DePere Road, Suite 310, St. Louis, Missouri, 63131. As mentioned, I'm here tonight to talk about the Southfield Specialty Care Proposed Project. On the screen before you is our site plan layout as it's proposed. If I can, I'll talk a little bit about the site plan orientation and then follow up with the use. So, the northern section of the site plan is retention pond and green landscaping. One of the goals of our design was to maximize the amount of good trees that are on this currently vacant site while getting rid of the less quality trees. As you move down the northwest corner of the building, houses, the administrative office, admissions, commercial kitchen, and back of the house areas, the northeast portion is a 12-bed care wing of all private rooms with associated nurse stations and dining and activity areas. The southwest corner is a mirror image of that same 12-bed, all-private unit. And the southeast square that you see there is the future expansion area for another 12-bed wing. As you can tell from the site plan, the building layout is shifted to the west in a twofold effort to keep the project as far out of a potential wetland on the east side of the property, as well as give the single-family residential homes the most amount of space and privacy we could. As it relates to the functioning of the building, it is, as mentioned, a 24,000 square-foot building. It's single-story. It will be 24/7 because it's a skilled nursing facility. This particular skilled nursing facility is licensed by the state and will have high acuity, post-acute care provided. When thinking about this particular, this particular care type, it's transitional in nature. The goal is to take folks who have been in a hospital setting or institutional setting for long periods of time and give them a more residential area to transition back towards their home or skilled nursing, if that be the case. The average length of stay for these particular patients is between 40 and 120 days. And I'd be happy to answer any question.
You want to go through the slides?
I'm sorry, thank you. Here are our elevations. The, the building consists of, you know, three basic material elements. There's a stacked stone sill that goes three feet up, and at that point it will commence with hardy board, and above that will be asphalt architectural shingles. As I mentioned, it's single-story and not a tall structure. I also wanted to share some of the photos of a recently completed project we've done in Bakersfield, California. The bottom middle picture is a typical nurse station we would put in. The top left is a typical lobby area, and the top right is a dining and activity area. On the left for this slide is a regular private patient room with its own en suite sitting area, and to the right is a therapy gym. The therapy gyms will use for everything from physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, and in whatever combination patients need to get back to living their best life.
Counsel? Mr. Frazier?
Yes, so, are you going to be associated with a hospital, or?
Yes, from a contracting standpoint, it's typically with insurance groups, payers. The folks will be discharged from hospitals, but a lot of the contracting can come directly from relationships with local physicians, as well as hospitals and the VA or groups like that.
So, will there be a physician on duty, or if someone needs something, they have to call the?
No, no, there will be a, there will be a medical director onsite at all times. Because of the acuity of the building, there will always be at least one RN in the building, probably upwards of three, depending on the census in the building, as well as LPNs and CNAs around the clock to make sure that there's a high level of care that can be delivered.
Thank you.
You saying yes?
Also move, Mr. Chairman?
Sorry, Terry, you have to...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the council's aware that there's a recommended resolution in your packet with all the conditions. And one in particular I wanted to point out is that this would be subject to receipt of waivers from the Zoning Board of Appeals for a 15-foot front yards landscaping waiver. And the purpose of that is to provide or to preserve as many trees to the east as possible, and we are in support of that waiver.
Sure. Okay. Alright, Mr. Fercassi? Did you want to still make the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Support?
Alright, so it's been moved by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the site plan PSP 19 dash 003. Are there any other questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Alright, site plan's been approved. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our communications portion of the meeting. Again, I'd ask that everyone that, as they come to the lectern, be aware of the statement that is placed forward before you as it relates to how to conduct ourselves as we do communications. We just basically want to make sure we keep things orderly and are not taking personal attacks, abusive language, threatening language, or anything of that nature as we're giving our remarks. So, our first request for recognition is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening, Council. If I could, before my time starts, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Michael Mandelbaum. At the last meeting, you talked about the fact that coming up in May, May the 31st, is the 98th anniversary to the Black Holocaust, which is the Tulsa Riot of 1921. So, I just want to thank you so much for acknowledging that, seeing that Southfield is predominantly African-American. You know, we have people that come before this lectern, and they talk about stuff that is just an outright lie. I know that residents are calling me, telling me that they are tired of the effort to try to make this city a city that is dealing with police brutality. I'm going to say it and say it one last time. We do not have a problem with police brutality in the City of Southfield. Our officers are trained, they are trained in diversity, and they are also trained with a little bit more training to identify people that drive drunk. I know because I'm a part of the Citizens Advisory Board. We did a 12-week course with the Police Department, understanding their style of policing, why they do what they do. We did a twelve-week course with the Police Department, understanding their style of policing, why they do what they do. And it's a wonderful program. And then our former police chief started that advisory board. Now, while the study meeting was going on, I'm in the pavilion talking to another resident, Keith Harris. And one of the people that you're going to see that come up and speak later on to get their little three minutes of fame to put on Facebook, approached me and the person that I was talking to out in the lobby. So I wanted to say it on TV in front of council and while the police is here. You cannot walk up to somebody and tell them that you are going to slap them because that's a threat. Now, I could just be intimidated and say, "I'm really scared," but I'm not easily intimidated. So when you say something like that and you think that you're froggy enough to do it, don't write a check that your glutes won't be able to cash because that's a threat. That is a threat. And I'm not a little woman. I do work out a little bit. And I'm not scared. You can't be me. Be yourself and do what you do. Stop trying to do what me and my husband do because I've been around this city since nineteen eighty-three and I have earned the respect of the residents in this city as well as the Police Department. So all of your efforts to try to bait me, they're not going to happen unless I allow it. And I'm not going to allow it because I have a lot to lose. It took me thirty-six years to build a reputation of trust with the people in this city. And I'm not going to let your three minutes of fame take that from me. So you can get up here and lie again, but nobody's listening.
Our next request for recognition is Gerard Mullin.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Mr. Chairman, on June nineteenth, twenty seventeen, this council voted on a proposed charter amendment that would have converted the elected offices of the City Treasurer and of the City Clerk into appointed staff positions if approved by the voters. Council wisely turned down that proposal at that time because it violated both the US and the Michigan State Constitution due to timing. That is, by nullifying the twenty-seventeen election results of the Treasurer and of the Clerk. What council should do now, if they wish to do so, is pass a similar amendment and then place it on the ballot this November twenty nineteen. And if passed by the voters, council should appoint the twenty-seventeen elected incumbents to the twenty-twenty-one open staff positions. That way, the voters can determine who is the permanent Staff Treasurer and who is the permanent Staff Clerk. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Sonia Simpson Gardner.
Did anything change? Do we get longer than three minutes now? I guess I'm a little confused before I get started.
I beg your pardon?
Do we get longer than three minutes?
No, you do not.
Oh, okay. It just seems like Ms. Gerald got longer than three minutes, so I guess I got a little confused with that. Sonia Simpson Gardner, coming before you, not necessarily about the police brutality, but since that was brought up, I will say, one person cannot mention or speak for the whole entire city. If you've not had any issues, I'm very happy that you've not had any issues, but you do not live at three zero five seven five Old Street Street, okay? I live alone and I did not choose to marry a older person and utilize somebody for their money. I'm living alone and I'm taking care of my daughter on my own. I pay all of my bills by myself. So I just want to share that with everybody and let everybody know, no one lives with Sonia Simpson Gardner but Sonia Simpson Gardner. So I don't need anybody to speak for Sonia Simpson Gardner. Now, I'm coming before you to let you know that again, nothing has changed. I took a break and I just decided to give you guys a break. I wanted to see if we could attempt to work a couple of things out without me coming before you so I can try to work on a couple of things. I'm still looking for a job. I've been able to work a couple of contracts. But the reason why I'm coming before you today is to have a conversation with Mr. Zorn. Um, I've still been trying to get in contact with you and I do appreciate you sitting down and having a meeting with me. But I did bring before you guys or before the city a poverty tax exemption form that I did qualify for. Um, and I was excluded. It looks like it was an accident and I've brought that to the city's attention several times. I walked into the city. I provided that information on time, went to the office actually three times, placed several phone calls where my phone calls were ignored. Now, I've already made you guys aware that I'm trying to help my daughter. My daughter and I live in a house alone. My daughter is doing her part. She gets good grades and I'm trying to get help. I feel like when I come here, I am being ignored. Mr. Cruz or President Cruz, I feel like when I come before you, I'm, I, it's, this is boring to you. And I'm letting you guys know, this is my life. When I leave from here, I cry every single night trying to make the ends meet for my daughter and I don't think that it's fair. So I am just asking you guys to treat me fairly and I don't understand why I have to keep coming before you, literally begging you guys to help me, but I'm letting you know, this is not the end. I'm trying my hardest to work with you, but I am a fighter. So I'm asking you guys very nicely, and Mr. Zorn, I'm asking you very nicely for another meeting so we can correct the mistake that was made. I'm not a mean person. I just want help. I'm just trying to get help for the mistake that was made. That mistake will impact my mortgage payment, so I'm trying to get it corrected and I would really like for you guys to help me. And also, um, since you wanted to make a comment about.
Your time is up.
No problem. I just wanted to make a comment about you making a comment about me.
And please do not make indirect comments to anybody else.
Well, but it was a comment made about me. Is that okay?
Nobody said, nobody mentioned your name and said anything about you personally.
You didn't hear that comment that was made about me at the beginning?
Your name spoken.
Okay. I just, I, I just wondered, did you hear the comment that was made about me?
Request for recognition, Mr. Keith Harris, I mean, no, Ms. Stacy Jackson, I'm sorry, is next.
Stacy Jackson, two one six eight five Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three three. Um, I came here tonight with something else to speak about, but being here today, I feel like I'm as befitting a person as any to bring back the humanity of the room. I believe at this point in time, my reputation of being a gentle soul and a person of humanity and kindness speaks volumes. So today, rather than talk about septic tanks, I'd rather talk about us belonging. We oftentimes hear about people speak about diversity and inclusion, but we toss around those words as if they're nothing more than twenty-first century buzzwords for desegregation and racial tolerance. We need to know that we all belong here, all of us. Our seniors, whites, blacks, all hues, shades, colors and religions in between. And I think that when we have those types of conversations of making one another belong, showing one another that we all belong, caring about having all of us be here, we can actually solve some of the world's, if not this city's, greatest problems. Sometimes it just takes a minute to have understanding rather than being forced to be understood. See, when you're understanding, you force yourself to remove yourself from your own problems and place yourself in the other person's perspective. Tonight, I wish I could give the room a hug. Because what I moved here for Southfield for, despite my issues with the city, despite my concerns, I have always cared for all of you. In fact, I stood right here at this podium and with all due respect, felt that I was being antagonized and agitated by one of our senior city council people. And as I stood late that night after the council meeting left, I sat outside speaking to other residents and I saw a car pull out and it was shaky. And in that moment, I spoke to a resident and I said, "Is that Don Ficassi? Is he going to be okay getting home?" The resident turned and looked and said, "No, that was Miron Frazier." I said, "Well, really? Was he going to be okay getting home?" At the end of the day, I care about people and that is what makes me special. When I come here, I speak to you from my heart and I know that I reach you. There are people who have strength to break down doors and move mountains. My gift is giving the courage to change people's hearts. I get paid to do that. So tonight, I'm asking everyone in front of the podium and behind the podium, please change your hearts. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Mr. Keith Harris.
How you guys doing today? Well, you guys know my organization is All Race and Life Matter, P.O. Box twenty-seven sixty-nine four eight zero three seven. When I say All Race and Life Matter, it means something to me. I grew up in a, in a very diverse family, white grandfather, Asian son-in-law. You know, I, my kids, my grandkids that were just born, one is jet white with blue eyes and, and they're twins. And the other one is jet black. But what I try to teach my kids is how to get along. I tell my son every day, "Don't lie on nobody and don't lie for nobody. I don't care how close you are to them." And I would really love if you read that statement of what this council is about when we come, when we start our council about direct statements, no insults, no, none of this kind of thing. You know, today, being out in the lobby, I, I just witnessed something that was just so unnecessary. And it could have led into a big issue. When we come into this building, this is a safe zone. This is a safe zone. Nobody should walk up to you, threaten your life because they say, "Oh, I heard something." That's childish. I teach my son, who's going to be a police officer, he's already doing conflict resolution, problem-solving with the Detroit Police Department. But here we got adults that don't know how to carry themselves. The day this incident would happen with Ms. Gerald was an uncause. It wa, it wa, it wa, it wasn't. I argue with my sister all the time. Everybody knows this. I go with her. But when she writes, she writes. She, this incident today should not have happened. And it could have led into something big, but thank God we had an appropriated, an appropriate person that came out, talked about, talked, problem-solved the situation, calmed it down the best he can. But we need to make sure every person that entered this building is not attacked verbally or threatening. We are adults. Every one of us that come to this council, up to this podium are adults. None of us should be threatening or saying unfathomable statements, F you, threatening to F a person up. You know, I'm, I'm kind of just shook up. I really am. Because I could have been caught in the middle of something that I wasn't prepared for today. We got to fix this issue in the, in this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Bruce Williams.
Hello, my name is Bruce Williams. Uh, my address is P.O. Box seven six oh one six three, Southfield, Michigan, four eight oh seven six. The reason I'm here today is that my concern, I want to express our concerns and the concerns of many other people about the temporary closing of the Beechwoods Golf Course. Uh, however, not to seem narrow-minded, the real issue concerning this closing is much bigger than just the golf course itself. It's going to determine and the image and reputation of Southfield, your quality of life in Southfield, stability of your neighborhoods and community, community assets, and also your property values. And I think we've all seen what can happen to a piece of property when a golf course is shut down. If you drive down Loser and Seven Mile and see that overgrown properties there. Okay. All, also the, already, the temporary closure of Beechwoods Golf Course has been reported in the news and has also been on the Fox TV. And I don't think that's a very positive thing. You've got to look at what you would think if you heard that a golf course or some major asset of a city was shutting down. And I don't think your thoughts would be very positive about that community. So many of us have our doubts about the long-term goals, which they say is to reopen the golf course after being down, shut down for a year. And we don't think that's a really realistic evaluation. Now, in addition to our concerns, what I want to do is point out that much of the information used to support the argument for the temporary of golf, Beechwoods, was based on omitted facts, misconceptions, inaccuracies, and other term, times of misleading information. If there was as much effort put into planning to keep the golf course open as there is in thinking of excuses and reasons why to close it, we wouldn't be having this discussion today. Most of the issues raised were financially related and on the surface may appear to be valid. But we'll look at some of these. During the presentation given by Parks and Rec Department, it was stated that the water bill for operations had been drastically increased over the past year. And also, there's been a need for the city to subsidize golf operations over the past few years at an average amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And why is that? As it been necessary for the city to subsidize costs in past years.
Your time's up.
Oh, I just got into tired and I'm sick.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Harold Hill.
Hello, my name is Harold Hill and I guess the previous person just teed it up for me. And I just wanted to continue that conversation about Beechwood Golf Course. And I wanted to go over some information from the March twenty-fifth meeting that led to the closure of Beechwood Golf Course. And it stated some of the reasons that they closed. One was Beechwood Golf Course has historically battled water issues, including the flooding of holes number three and number four, leading, leaving holes number five and six unreachable and therefore unplayable. As a result, the golfers are asked to play holes five, uh, five holes twice to accommodate their round. And this is true. This is very true. But what I found after taking a closer look is that it was mentioned that it's probably the River Woods River that's flooding the golf course. And I'm closer looks at it, I noticed that the retention pond on hole number seven is causing the problem. It's like a bucket. Anytime it rains, it fills up and the retention pond has nowhere to overflow. So it's overflowing down the hill. Water follows a path of least resistance. It falls down the hill and it's flooding across the holes number three and four and it's going right through the trees. A remedy could be just to. A remedy could be just to decrease the water in that retention pond. That would be a simple fix for that part. Now, that may be River Rouge doing some other things, but that's one of the major issues. And this has been going on for years, longer than just the last few years. It's been going on for about seven or eight years. And if that's the only problem, then that's sheer neglect. And I don't know who the greenskeeper is, or, because that's something I noticed right away. You can see the water running across the golf pass. So, that's kind of a shame, and that's probably an easy fix that can happen. So hopefully, I took a closer look at that. And this morning, I found out that, uh, other golf courses, like Farmington Hills Golf Course, I was at Discount Tire this morning, and I met one of the maintenance people at Discount Tire. And he was telling me they would never close a golf course for just little issues such as irrigation. They fixed the problem. As a fact, this person has been working there for eighteen years. He knows how to fix the pumps. He's the groundskeeper. He fixes a lot of the things, and they find some things out. But they're into making money while having the golf course open. So I hope this helps, but that's just something that should really be looked into. If the course is man-made problem, it could be fixed easily. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Toby Rhodes.
Toby Rhodes, one seven zero zero one, New Jersey, Southfield, Michigan, uh, two four eight five six nine seven one eight nine. The first thing I want to say is that I speak as a spokesman for the black community in Southfield. And I want to say that the Police Department of the City of Southfield is an evil threat to the black community in Southfield. Um, there's a national conversation going on about mass incarceration, and they were happy participants in terrorizing and brutalizing a whole community of black men for years and years and years. I've been complaining about it for seven years. I've been fighting them for ten years. And while the, uh, Police Department has been terrorizing, I mean, basically, their job is to attack poor people. And so they brutalize poor people. And so we spent hundreds of millions of dollars on racists running around the black community, destroying and destabilizing, creating chaos and confusion in the black community for their own personal benefit, but no benefit to the people of Southfield. And so what's the result? You lose Northland. Imagine if you took that money and put it in the Northland. You'd have a beautiful public attraction. That mall was a growth machine, and the machine is destroyed because of the morons in the Police Department. A prime example of that is what happened at the last meeting. I was speaking, and I wasn't pointing no fingers. I wasn't yelling at anybody, and I was stopped from talking. My time was never given back. In the meantime, someone was behind me making a scene. The acting chief was in the auditorium. He did absolutely nothing. That was the same acting chief who had me arrested for going to vote. Now, he ain't black, but he had no problem violating the civil rights and constitutional rights if a black man in his own community was going to vote. And so this, once you went into recess, it's like pandemonium ensued. I mean, this other woman started yelling and screaming through the auditorium for the next ten minutes. I asked her, when she started, "Are you talking to me?" She said, "I'm talking to everybody." So she was creating a public disorder in the auditorium for the next ten minutes. And I'm walking out, and I'm looking at the, the acting chief just standing and not doing anything. Now, he arrested me for nothing when I went to go vote. And you got a public disorder, and there's an auditorium full of people. He did absolutely nothing. So then, I go out in the hallway, and I'm talking with somebody. He sends out one of his flunkies to come listen to my, listen to my conversation. Well, that's just rude on his face. There's a, a, a pandemonium. She's, I can hear in the hallway, still screaming it through, through the auditorium. Now, you were out in recess when all this was happening. So after a while, I finished my conversation, I come back in, and then she started saying, "Just wait till, who, uh, Pookie and Ray Ray come." I said, "Do you know you're in public? Do you not understand other people can hear you?" And so she keeps on going. And so finally, other people said, "You've had your say. Just be quiet." She would not stop. Acting chief is sitting there not doing a single thing. Now, he supposedly supposed to uphold the rule of law, but he doesn't. He upholds the rule of racism. All he cares about is terrorizing black men and, and making our lives miserable.
Next request for recognition is Gregory Keeler.
Gregory Keeler, twenty-five one seven zero Circle Drive. I had planned to come here today to talk about Circle Drive and the water in the sewer system. But after hearing everything, I really more so look at the mayor who's not here. And one of the biggest things in even all the issues and fights we done had throughout the city, he said, "We're one big family, and we need to come together and talk to one another." And just like we did with the oil, just like we did with the soil, the sewer lines, and we had the meetings and town hall meetings and come together and talk, I think we all just need to sit down and talk to each other and get some of this frustration out of the way. Because there seems to be, just in this last year to me, too much tension. Too much tension between up there, between some of the people behind me, and then some of the people further back. I think some of that needs to go away. I think we should be able to talk to one another. And I'm more than appreciative to come in and talk to people. I'm appreciative for every time I hear Mr. Fakassi talk, or councilman talk, Fakassi talk. And he says, "How do we bring young people into the city? How do we develop things for them to come here for? How do we keep them from, when they grow up, leaving the city, to attracting them to the city?" And I gotta see some kind of way we gotta start attracting each other. We gotta stop fighting one another. We gotta be friends, and we gotta love one another. We are family.
Thank you. And, uh, next, uh, recognition is Sarah Habbo.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Habbo, and, um, I'm a coach with South Oakland County Soccer. And now is basically the end of our season, but the next season is starting up. And so I just wanted to let people know that we have both recreation and travel or premier soccer teams. Uh, we have mini-kickers, which is for the four and five-year-olds. Uh, if you've never seen mini-kickers, it's by far the cutest thing on this planet, watching these little kids run around, some of them crying, some of them playing with flowers. Uh, it's a really good time. And you can sign up your children starting June first. For premier, we have a informational evening on May twenty-ninth, which is a Wednesday, from seven to eight. And tryouts for premier and travel are June fifteenth and sixteenth. Uh, for further information, you can go to the Sox website. It is SoxFC dot com. So Sox, as in South Oakland County Soccer, F as in football, C as in club, dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our communications portion of the meeting. Counsel.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I just, uh, like to read something. Uh, we've got a great planning department. Somebody in between a meeting we had, study made, and now dropped off the minutes of regular council meeting, June twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty-four. And, uh, but it's stated here, it's something important, that I stated that the Reynolds Building is listed as Mr. Yamazaki's great buildings, and he would hate to destroy the pride and meaning which it has created for the city. Referred back to an article printed April twenty-ninth fifty-seven, The Free Press, which stated, "The jewel on stilts rises over the lily pool, takes in a whole page extolling the beauty of that building." So, Mr. Yamazaki was contacted by me, and he showed me all the great pictures. And, and the book that he, that the Yamazaki book is featuring, the Reynolds Building. So, it's very important. I felt it that, then, and I really feel it now. Very important to save it.
Sure. Glad we all voted in favor of that today, then, to try to preserve it.
And our planning department, quick, draw.
Nineteen eighty-four, that was some deep digging they did. All right, is that all, Mr. Fakassi? All right, Mr. Mandelbaum.
Thank you. Um, to tomorrow, from ten to twelve, the, there's going to be a senior vendor fair here in the Southfield Pavilion. It's free admission. They're going to have a lot of information for our seniors um, about various things, insurance information, insurance providers, home health care, city departments, and anything else that you could hopefully, uh, need for, for yourself if you are a senior. Again, that's tomorrow between ten and twelve here in the Pavilion. Also, on Friday, this Friday, May twenty-fourth, from twelve to two for seniors, it's drop-in game day. Uh, there is a small fee of fifty cents to participate. Um, but they're going to have, uh, a number of games, including Uno, Scrabble, Dominos, um, for everyone to get along and, and play with. Also, that morning, Friday morning, where the city will be hosting a Memorial Day, um, program that will start here in the council chambers at nine AM. Um, we will hear from our council president, um, as well as members of our Veterans Commission, um, as well as other veterans as well. Um, it's always a nice program. I encourage everyone to attend. Again, that's Friday here at nine AM. Also, we are going to, there's been a lot of, it's no secret that Southfield has been looking for a police chief. And on June third, from six to eight PM, we will be holding a community panel interview um, with the top two police chief candidates here in the chambers. Again, from, on June third, from six to eight PM. Um, as part of the hiring process, we are accepting questions from the public relating to the Police Department and the community in an effort to provide transparency and engage residents. Questions for consideration can be emailed to policechief@cityofsouthfield.com. All questions bill, will be reviewed by the Human Resource Department to avoid duplication and ensure that they are appropriate and acceptable under federal, federal rules and restrictions. So, to clarify, residents, business, business members, anyone can submit a question to policechief@cityofsouthfield.com, but you will not be asking the questions. There will be a moderator, um, who will be asking the questions that have been submitted and have gone through a screening process. So we want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. Thank you very much.
And, Mr. President, I just want to make one clarification. We haven't finalized whether or not it'll be two or all of the candidates, and there's an internal discussion going on with council leadership over that matter. And we'll have that resolved hopefully in the next day or two.
Thank you. Mr. Fraser, Ms. Taylor?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Mayor? He's not here. Is, uh, Mrs. Zorn, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir. I'd like to just speak to, uh, earlier comments regarding a poverty exemption that had been applied for. Poverty exemptions are granted by the Board of Review. The poverty exemption that came up was heard by the Board of Review, a citizens' panel, and was declined. That, uh, is a, the Board of Review is a function of the assessor's office. The assessor's office is not a direct report to the, uh, city administrator. I have spoken to the assessor, and I have been assured that a letter outlining the appeal process was sent to the individual who spoke this evening. Um, this has been relayed in a, in, in the very first meeting. Uh, there is an amount established by law, by state, uh, law, and that is the amount that the Board of Review used to make the determination regarding assets and income. Uh, so there is an appeal process. It is to go up to the next step, and the city assessor's office did outline what that step is, and that is an appeal to, uh, I believe it's through the Michigan Tribune. I don't have the exact letter, but I will be sharing a copy of that communication to the full council.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Thank you. I'd like to call, uh, council's attention to, um, a discussion we had in closed session regarding the court matter of Atkins versus the City of Southfield, case number eighteen dash, uh, one six seven seven four N O. Um, I am seeking direction, uh, from council regarding, uh, recent case evaluation, um, with Oakland County Circuit Court.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to make a motion that the city council does hereby accept the council's recommendation on whether to accept the case evaluation award.
Support?
Um, it's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we, I don't have the exact language, do I have to repeat it again? I gave you my letter, but go ahead.
That we, that we accept our city council's, uh, attorney's recommendation on whether to accept the case evaluation award.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
All set. Anything else for us today?
Nothing else, thank you.
All right, very good. Clerk's office, anything for us today?
We have nothing today.
All right. It's our treasurer here today. I don't believe I see him there. Planner, assessor, engineers, all right, very good. No meetings scheduled, no ordinances to deal with this evening. So it looks like a meeting is adjourned.